...the work session of the Nebraska State Board of Education. The December State Board of Education work session will now come to order. Denise, please call roll.
Lisa Fricki.
Present.
Patsy Coad-Johns. Rachel Wise.
Present.
John Whitzel.
Here.
Molly O'Holleran.
Present.
Patricia Timm. Maureen Nichols.
Present.
Patrick McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Bloomstedt.
Present.
Thank you Denise. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're done speaking. And please turn off your cell phones. Thank you very much. We just attended the Teacher of the Year in Excellence in Teaching Luncheon, and in order to be respectful of time for our guests and the audience, we are going to move.
Let's just go over.
Okay. Sorry. Continuing on, never mind that one paragraph, please, but in regards to the Commissioner's report and agenda review, consent agenda, Commissioner?
Yeah, first of all, I guess first item is kind of our regular item, consent agenda. If you have any thing in particular that you would like to pull off for separate decision or needed any additional information, please just fill out that pink slip and put it in the box in front of Scott there, and then we'll address that one as well. Secondly, report on rules. There's just a few items for you already on the, within your agenda that all of our rule Title 93, Chapter 1 through 16, so our personnel rules essentially, they're approved by you, approved by the Attorney General, approved by the Governor, so I think we're moving forward and have them effective, well, I guess they've been effective since December 2nd. And then rules awaiting adoption by the State Board. We've had a couple hearings on Rules 91 and Rule 92, and so that reports there for your awareness anyway. And so, I actually, I think one of the things we wanted to do, and I'll kind of look at Lisa, I think the hope was to go ahead and, given we have guests here, to take up a little bit of the strategic plan report and break it up a little bit in this sense, but I'll turn it over to Lisa, and then she can either turn it back over to me, however she likes to proceed, so.
Okay, well, we would like to report on the external review of the strategic plan, Item 3.6. B. Anne Herman and Sarah Ann Cochin, I, oh, I'm glad to see I pronounced that right, are here to report on the status of the external review on strategic plan. We will hear from Anne and Sarah, and then there will be opportunity for questions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Hello, people we haven't seen today yet. Great to see you. As Lisa, thank you, Ryan, for putting that up. We were able to meet with the Strategic Planning Committee earlier this morning and have given them a memo last week and another update this morning. We also have finalized one of the decision points of a timeframe that we'll update, so it'll be different than what's in your written report and also in the presentation, but we finalized that as of this morning, so we'll be sure to share that as well. But before I get started, are there any questions or anything you want to bring up? Otherwise, please feel free to interrupt with questions along the way. Okay. Just to remind everybody, when we started down this review, we really intended to answer three primary things. Of course, we wanted to be open to things that would emerge through the process, but we really focused on what has been happening in and around NDE since the strategic plan has been implemented. Where has there been progress on the goals that we laid out in the strategic plan when it was launched? And how does the strategic plan need to be revised, rethought of, et cetera? Because we've had new learnings, we've had ESA come into play, et cetera, since the strategic plan was launched. So where do we need to make changes, if any? We've broken down the themes that came from interviews, and remember, we spent time with over 53, as of yesterday, or Tuesday, pardon me, as of Tuesday, 53 individuals who gave very thoughtful, poignant responses to our interview questions. And across those folks, they were both internal team members, all of you participated, so thank you, as well as external constituents and stakeholders, folks from local school boards or ESUs or some of our partners in some of the associations across the state. And what we really wanted to present to you today is an update across those themes, and we've really split them into two buckets. Things that were held consistent by all of the participants or most of the participants, and places where we started to see some inconsistencies, or where some people felt one way and some people felt another way in the process. So, one of the biggest things that really shines through, and I shared this in committee this morning, is that overwhelmingly, there is such strong vocal support for the success of the strategic plan, for the importance that the strategic plan brought to the state. I didn't share this this morning, but one of my favorite quotes from multiple people was essentially, having the strategic plan done by NDE and by this board has helped to encourage or really create a trend for this to happen at local school districts. And that is something that people acknowledged multi-force. So I think you should be really excited about that. It wasn't necessarily the intention of why you did the strategic plan, but your work has had really positive ripple effects across the state. We also know that people feel very strongly and positively that this strategic plan can help really focus the resources on the hard work that we have to do, and that's something very important. It gives us a guiding star, so there was broad recognition of that as well. We also will say that a lot of things have emerged from folks where their thoughts about what has influenced the implementation of the strategic plan. We knew some of those things, like obviously ESA came forward, right? We've had reorganization and some NDE members change roles, et cetera. We knew things like that had happened, but there's also been other ideas that have come up where people have told us, hey, we think this is an important thing to recognize that has happened concurrently to our implementation of the strategic plan. And those things are important to pay attention to because we don't do the work of a strategic plan in a vacuum. And lastly, I want to really highlight, there is such strong, very vocal support for the Commissioner and for the members of the Nebraska Department of Education. That was a shared belief and perspective by every single person that we had the chance to interview. So that, I just highlight that because I know most of us are saying, well, good, but that doesn't always happen, so we should feel really good about that.
Yeah. They didn't hear that from me, by the way. I was going to tell you that. I was a little more harsh, I think, so anyway.
We promised confidentiality, so I'm going to move fast. One of the things that did come through louder than clear is there are lots of opportunities to enhance our communication internally, at the board level, with external stakeholders. And I think most of us probably anticipating that finding, but that was definitely something that has carried through and we'll dive deeper into as we continue through this process. People are also really thinking about, how do we ensure that the strategic plan is updated to reflect learnings and things that have come forth since we launched? People don't necessarily always have agreement, but we're going to do a deeper dive in some new data collection to help us really understand, where do we have differences in perception? Where do we have gaps between what one group may think and another group may think? And you'll hear more about that, and it's also covered in more depth in the written report. I will say this too, I have to acknowledge the thoughtfulness and the wisdom that Mr. McPherson laid forth, the idea to do an audit and a review at a two-year cycle on the board. It's really been appreciated by folks, and I think a lot of people are seeing this as a really well-timed review to come through. So I know it wasn't just Mr. McPherson, but for the board to have thought through that and put it in the to-do list is a very smart thing to do. Things that were, I would say inconsistent, and I was very blunt with the committee this morning, that we promised confidentiality in these interviews, and so we won't be segmenting and attributing comments by any one stakeholder group and/or by an individual, because that was promised in the interviews. But things that were inconsistent across stakeholders, were understanding or having the same perception on how goal progress is tracked and monitored. We also would say, people had different perceptions and thinking through, how is the strategic plan guiding the day-to-day work, both within the internal NDE but also at the board governance level? People had different perspectives and philosophies around that. I'd also say that some folks had a different, a different way of thinking about how they owned or didn't own, how NDE is or is not direct or indirectly responsible for outcomes. So, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, we are going to conduct a more in-depth quantitative review to understand, where are these perception differences? Where are they held? Is it board members? Is it, board members feel one way and internal members feel another way? Is it across the board, et cetera? We really want to understand, where do people really see places for understanding the direct or indirect nature of the role of NDE? And do we need to tweak some goal language to reflect an indirect or direct role? In addition, how much progress do we feel has been made on this goal? And again, that's on a quantitative scale. And finally, we'll also look at whether or not people feel that each particular goal needs to be reviewed and any suggestions that are tied to possible revisions that need to come forth. In your written reports, the next steps are laid out in a month-by-month timeline. As I alluded to at the beginning of this conversation, the committee made a decision that the final strategic plan review report will be presented to the board in February of 2019. But if you want to look at detailed timeline in your written reports, it's there. But here's the broad overview of next steps. Many of you may or may not have known that we had a cross-division opportunity or meeting yesterday where we were going to spend time with the internal team and help them understand, here's the themes that have come through, here's some things we've learned, and here's next steps. Due to the National Day of Mourning, the rug got moved, and we'll be meeting with the internal team next week. And we are very grateful for the staff because I, I'm certain that took quite a lot of elbow grease to make that happen and get us, get us time with the staff so quickly. We also have two internal NDE team meetings that are scheduled. One is in December and one is in January. And that's where we're really going to do some heavy lifting of sense-making of what's come forth. We're going to do a deep dive into the quantitative data that I just shared we'll be collecting soon, as well as prepare something to come to the board that literally goes goal by goal and makes recommendations for where maybe word changes are needed or where the board needs to look at different goals for different reasons. In addition, we have to be mindful that in the early 2019, in January, there will be a board transition that needs to occur. Elections will be held, committees will be decided, committee membership will be decided. So we have to allow for that transition in January to happen so that we can come back and help launch the board into their new session, as decided it would be in February of 2019. And then we'll also be finalizing the environmental scan that we shared with you we were doing, which is really taking into account everything else that happened outside the strategic plan while the strategic plan was being implemented. And being mindful of those activities can sometimes enhance implementation, and they can also create barriers to implementation. We just need to be thoughtful of how things have happened and be mindful of going forward, what we need to keep our eyes open for. So with that, I want to see if we have questions or any notes or thoughts you'd like us to take into the next couple months of work.
Just a simple question. When you have this, these internal meetings next week and again in January, I think you said, will staff and management be together on these, or will they be separate?
That's a great question. There will be combined groups. There'll be combined working groups. The meeting next week, the cross-division meeting, I believe, is a very large group of employees. Now, it might be a little slightly different because it's not their regularly scheduled date, which was yesterday, but I do anticipate quite a few folks are able to make the meeting next week. And then in the two working sessions, it's a combined group of both staffing and management. Thank you for that question.
And they'll be spread out amongst each other to work together?
Yes, we'll, we'll be doing facilitated sessions of work together in those rooms. Yeah. Thank you. That was a great question. Any other questions?
Go ahead, Lisa, or Rachel.
Yes, I do, and we talked about this a little bit at the committee, but I think I want to bring it up to the whole group, just to kind of reinforce. When you do the final report out in February and with the data that you're gathering, that's your survey data, perception data, that data you do plan to report by group?
Yes.
So that we can look at how the State Board collective perceptions may be, how the other stakeholders, whatever of those subgroups that you have, we will receive that data differentiated by those groups, correct?
Correct, yes. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. As Rachel mentioned, when we did the inside interviews, we promised confidentiality, and because of that, it means we cannot attribute comments or certain types of themes to any one group, but the way we're going to collect the data on the quantitative surveys is exactly what Rachel is alluding to. One of the things we want to see it emerge is, are there differences within stakeholder groups or across stakeholder groups? So, thank you for making that clear. Do that.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate the confidentiality issue. I'm sure that if you published it by board members, everybody'd know what I said. It seems to me, you know, that going forward, and I, maybe I'm jumping ahead of conversation here or something, but this is a ten-year plan, and we're just finishing the first two years. And, you know, although I'm not going to be here, I'm very concerned that this process continue, whether it be two years from now or maybe three years from now. I don't know what you would recommend, but it seems to me, you cannot, you have to have this continued oversight over whether we're following through with implementation of this plan. Otherwise, it's meaningless, and if you don't have a third-party review, as I've said in the past, you have no way of really being assured that it's being done. I don't know what your thoughts are as far as whether two years from now, or maybe it's just, maybe it's three years from now, but I'd be interested in your thoughts, and I just, as parting thought, I just think it's extremely important that this review process continue in future years.
Well, I appreciate that question very much. One, I would echo what you're saying. I think it's a critical piece of especially a long-term document and a long-term vision that you do periodic reviews. I would say, at a minimum three years, I would probably lean toward a two-year process of reviewing. But there are some things that we might, that we'll recommend that you might want to adapt in between those two-year reviews, that maybe would give you the latitude of saying, we could wait three years this time, or we've made enough progress between this year and that year that maybe we wait three years. But I would recommend, again, planning on another review in at least two to three years, but there'll be some other periodic, smaller check-ins I'd recommend that happen more regularly, both at the board level and also with internal staff.
And I just, if you don't mind, I would just hope that as this review is completed, that you, this board set a date, be it two years or three years from now, a definitive date when this is going to happen again, as we did two years ago when we implemented this plan. Otherwise, I'm afraid these things kind of get lost. And, you know, I love calendars.
I know. He does.
When you have a calendar and you say you're going to do something, you get it done.
Right, absolutely.
And so I, I hope that this board, as it continues to function, will make sure that there is a date certain in the ongoing plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. And Rachel? As a recognition to my colleague, Mr. McPherson, on calendars, the survey, because it will be reflective of the current board, and I believe you said it's coming out in December.
It's coming out, we're going to launch it Monday.
Monday, okay. Just wanted to verify the, when to look for it in our email.
Yes, we'll let you too.
Would be next week, be looking for it to get that survey done. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for asking.
Any other questions?
And all of the detailed dates that we had talked about, other than the February board meeting, being where we'll provide the final report, are all listed in detail in your written reports in front of you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for bringing that up.
It's not a question, but a comment, and I think it is really important, like, kind of in the continuous improvement mode, the notion that we have the additional review process, and I'm glad to have that raised one more time. I, I actually think it's somewhat remarkable in the, in the sense, there's so many things that are happening, by the way. I mean, you know, I, we don't get many moments to take stock, and I appreciate one thing you said this morning. I, I get a little concerned, you know, that we're doing everything right. I mean, I know we're not, right? So, so I want to make sure that the report contributes to a process that helps us continue to improve in our work, and it doesn't, doesn't leave us absent, you know, that, that notion. And I know one thing that I, at least I've anticipated, or we, we've certainly had staff conversations, like the how we measure goals, right? I mean, that's a tough one. You, you look at the different types of goals and how we get them measured, and we started to bounce around ideas inside the agency to try to set some approach, and I'm hoping that can kind of at least evolve out of this process, because I want those other benchmarks that are at the right moments in time for those various goals, so we can feel like, and almost can see and track progress ourselves. Because otherwise, you have two tendencies that can happen, and I think we all feel it, you know, kind of up at this level. One tendency is, oh, well, we've got all these things going, have we accomplished anything? I mean, I get, I get that feeling all the time, right? Or just, or constantly. And, and the other side is holding ourselves accountable to actually getting some of those other things done based on those calendars. So I, I appreciate that work, and that's kind of my, my, my piece of it. I've actually, I gotta say, also appreciated the notion of third-party, and we asked school districts and others to go through review processes with third-party. And I'm really, I don't know how many other state agencies do that in this kind of setting, but I, I think that's a really important part of our process too, so, so thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other questions? Yes.
And I'd just like to echo Dr. Bloomstedt, what you said, because she, she made sure that, she mentioned that we really were kind of the role model for all of our local districts to consider doing a strategic plan, and I am well aware of many that have. But your statement of thinking, well, we're doing everything right, and that's never reality. But I would hope that we can role model that very same piece to our local districts that are doing these. And to say that it's never going to be perfect, but we have ways to improve. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I turn it back over to our chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now turned to board priorities and policy research. Ryan For.
So I don't believe we, Ryan has anything in addition, so we're able to proceed, I guess.
Okay. At this time, I would like to recognize our outgoing State Board members, Molly O'Holleran and Patrick McPherson. Resolution to recognize State Board of Education member Molly O'Holleran. Whereas Molly O'Holleran faithfully upheld the oath of office for the State Board of Education and the bylaws and policies of the State Board of Education. Whereas Molly O'Holleran contributed to the general supervision and administration of the school system of the state. Whereas Molly O'Holleran fulfilled the policy forming, planning, and evaluative duties of the state school program as prescribed by the Nebraska revised statutes. Whereas Molly O'Holleran represented the populace of District 7 by executing the powers and duties of the State Board of Education. Whereas Molly O'Holleran promoted the tenants of positive partnerships, relationships, and success, transitions, and educational opportunities and access as Chair of the AQuest Student Success Access and Support Domain Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved, the State Board of Education thanks Molly O'Holleran for her service and contributions to the educators, schools, and students of the Nebraska education system on behalf of the Nebraska State Board of Education this seventh day of December 2018. Congratulations, Molly. Would you please stand up?
I'd like to say, that's a lot of Mollys.
Molly, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, sure. Oh my gosh, and I'll think of you, John, John's always a- Bad times, so. And also, I have to say, is it's been an honor to represent District 7, but more than just representing District 7, it's learning from my colleagues. So I want to thank each of you, and also the management, support, staff, and best of luck to Robin Stevens. He's in our room, and he will uphold my position with great character and charm, so thank you so much.
A resolution to recognize State Board of Education member Patrick McPherson. Whereas Patrick McPherson faithfully upheld the oath of office for the State Board of Education and the bylaws and policies of the State Board of Education. Whereas Patrick McPherson contributed to the general supervision and administration of the school system of the state. Whereas Patrick McPherson fulfilled the policy forming, planning, and evaluative duties of the state program as prescribed by the Nebraska revised statutes. Whereas Patrick McPherson represented the populace of District 7 by executing the powers and duties of the Board of Education. Whereas Patrick McPherson promoted the formation of the Budget and Finance Committee and champion fiscal responsibility for the Nebraska State Board of Education. Now therefore, be it resolved, the State Board of Education thanks Patrick McPherson for his service and contributions to the educators, schools, and students of the Nebraska education system on behalf of the Nebraska State Board of Education this seventh day of December 2018. Congratulations, Patrick.
I'll try to be brief. Thank you. It's been an honor to be here the last four years. I've enjoyed working with the staff and the Commissioner and the rest of my board members. I really appreciate our Commissioner and his efforts, and I appreciate the board. I think they've made some real progress in the last four years. I think, I, I think I've been contributory toward those. I've certainly not hesitated to raise my voice occasionally. And, but I think we're running in a more businesslike manner at times, and I appreciate that. I think we're holding people more accountable, and I appreciate that. I wish my successor, Deb Neary, great luck, and thank you very much.
The State Board of Education conference session report is attached in SPARC, and I'm sure each of you have a copy, but if you'd like to go back to it, it is in SPARC. Standing committee reports. We have two action items for tomorrow. One is to adopt the proposed revisions of State Board Bylaw B6, Agenda and Meeting Materials for Regular Meetings. The Policy Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee concur with the proposed revisions and recommendations adopted in the proposed revisions. The second action item, Policy Committee reviewed the proposed dates and recommended adopting the second version with the December 9 and 10, 2019 dates. Policy Committee will start four-year review at their next meeting on the state bylaws. If I could explain a little bit on, if you will, action item number two. We had a board member who requested, at her request, to change the meeting dates for December of next year from this, the standard dates that we had originally proposed, which were five and six December. She requested the changes be nine and 10 December of next year. So, we're going to have vote on two revisions, one or two, and that'll be brought forward to the board tomorrow. Any questions? Seen, heard, and done. Rachel, please report on the Legislative Committee.
Thanks, John. The Legislative Committee met today to really debrief on several of the activities throughout the year, and most recently on some meetings we had statewide, meetings with our partners in, from the legislature. And I want to first start by thanking the Legislative Committee, Maureen, Molly, and Pat, and in particularly with Molly and Pat leaving the board, their contributions have been outstanding as it relates to our legislative direction as a board. And I think without some of the contributions they have made, we probably wouldn't be at the point where we are of having a direction, an annual direction, an expectation, and plans going forward in how do we really create a strong relationship and partnership with our colleagues across the street, so to speak. There are several areas that I want to talk about that really interface the discussions that we had. We had three meetings in November with, with some state senators, meeting in Kearney, a meeting in Lincoln, and a meeting in- in Lincoln, and a meeting in Omaha. And from those meetings and kind of our debriefing, there are some things that I'd like to share that are really our recommendations for going forward. And there were several topics that really surfaced through our meetings that we feel are important for us to go back and revisit next year, that are important topics to some of our colleagues across the street. Those topics are early childhood education, career and technical education and career pathways, behavioral mental health, school resource officers, juvenile justice and transitions in school reengagement, ESUs and the core services definition. So those were some of the themes that surfaced over November in our discussions that we feel as committees change and we transition, those are important topics for the committee next year to pick up and discuss. We then talked about what I would say are some expectations for the State Board Legislative Committee in 2019. That really builds on the work and the foundation from the committee this year, and certainly I'm going to give a shout out for Mr. McPherson on the calendar. Many of these items are calendar-related as we start to think about those expectations for next year. The first is to establish a calendar by February 2019 for State Board Legislative Committee events and actions, so that we really map out what the expectations throughout the year will be in our relationships with the legislature. We also instituted a process this year in building relationships where each of us on the Legislative Committee had two members of the Education Committee kind of assigned to us, so to speak, that we did some reaching out and communicating with to be strategic in our relationship with the Education Committee of the Legislature. And so we would recommend to continue that process next year. We had a recommendation of something we didn't do this year that we think should be ongoing, and that is any time we have newly elected or appointed senators, that we have a strategic process to reach out and communicate and provide background information on the role of the State Board of Education and the role of the Department of Education, kind of an Orientation 101 to our colleagues across the street on what the role of the State Board of Education and the Department of Education are. And so that's a piece that we think should move forward. We did, this was our first year of scheduling some regional sessions. We did those in November. Our recommendation, calendar recommendation for next year would be to move those to September or October in 2019. We think that November was a little late, and to get those on the calendar early and communicate early what those dates would be. Then we felt it was important to start the review in 2019 of our legislative and regulatory priority document, so that we can start to build the document for 2020. So the document for 2020 is maybe moving forward a little bit earlier in that process. And then finally, we talked about we maybe need to develop an ongoing process to inform all of our state senators on regulatory, what our regulatory processes are, and help look at strategies that we can move to using our regulatory authority to meet needs versus a statutory process. That when we move things into a statutory process, it sometimes creates limitations as opposed to a regulatory process that we believe maybe creates more opportunities. So we think we need to be more strategic in that process. And then the final recommendation that we have is at a federal level, and from a federal perspective, we believe it would be advantageous in January or February to have an overview of the Perkins Reauthorization. We've not had much discussion this year as a committee on federal legislation because of the evolving nature of things that are happening, and I see making eye contact with Katie in the back, but really providing an overview of the Perkins Reauthorization and what that means for us as a state board and from a department. What are some key elements that we should be aware of in that reauthorization of Perkins? That, I believe, Mr. Chair, is our report. Any though comments from Mo, Molly, Pat, and then any questions? Any other, did I miss any thing? Lisa?
I just want to commend this committee. Sometimes when there isn't communication, there ends up being a reaction to something that's already done. I think the work that you all have done is putting us in a proactive position to build partnerships, relationships that will move forward to help all kids in school. So I thank you, thank you, thank you for your direction and your work and your schedule and the calendar. So thank you for your work. That's amazing.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Maureen, please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
Okay. Well, first off, I want to give thanks to the committee that's worked together, the board members that have worked together this whole year, Lisa Fricki and Rachel Wise, Pat Tim, who was not here today. But I also want to recognize the staff members who have just very diligently worked with us and kept us moving in the right direction. Carol Baum, who has taken very explicit detailed notes for our minutes to be able to review before our next meeting, and as a Chair, I very, very much appreciate it. So thank you to the staff, and thank you to the board members for all your work. The Teaching and Learning Domain Committee has two action items to address tomorrow. The first report is on Action Items 3.3A, and it is to approve the Business, Marketing, and Management Content Area Standards. The standards are attached in SPARC for you all to review. As a reminder, the board heard a presentation from the staff on the proposed standards at last month's meeting. The committee recommends approving this action item tomorrow. And we've also asked as a committee to have Katie Graham and Sydney Kobza to provide a brief update on a couple of changes that have been made in just the last month. They're simple changes, but very positive changes.
Good afternoon. Thank you, and we're really excited to share with you just a couple updates since last month. More than anything, we had kept our public input survey open for a couple more weeks after we spoke with you, and we're really excited, as this is an ongoing effort to try to get as much public comment and stakeholder feedback as possible. When we met that last month, we had just over 200 responses, and by the time we closed it, we had 349. So still getting input. We also made sure and reached out specifically, so there was a balance between K-12, teachers, post-secondary, business industry, as well as parents and other community members. Based on that feedback, we did a lot of consideration. Sydney, I'll let her share in just a moment. Back and forth with our lead teachers and other stakeholder groups that were in collaboration with us, and we did make one significant change, minor, but significant, since you all saw the first draft, and I'll let Sydney share with you about that.
And so after the public comment was made, I met with each lead teacher to go over just the comments that were discussed. And one change that stood out was the name of a course called College Wealth Building Fundamentals, and that was misleading as it was basically a savings plan for college, and so we changed the name to Wealth Building Fundamentals.
And that was at the recommendation, I believe, of a teacher?
Yes, and that was, an Arlington teacher recommended that in just a passing conversation, so.
So everything we could do to just provide more clarity and explicitness, so everything is as intuitive as possible. But other than that, the standards remained relatively intact from when we presented them last month.
Board members, any questions?
Thank you.
You did good, girls.
Thank you.
Okay. The committee also discussed item 3.3B, the action item to adopt the Annual Plan for the Nebraska statewide assessment and reporting system. And we've asked the guru, Jeremy Henninger, to come up and share some brief comments and history on this item.
The guru, is that going to stick? Or is that?
I like it. We're coming up with a name today.
Thank you. Jeremy Henninger, Director of statewide Assessment. Yeah, the plan that we put before you today is annual plan that's required statutorily, and it just details the grades and the names of the tests that will be given during this school year, the 18, 19 school year. And so that's a pretty common document that we try to do every year, just so everybody's clear about what we're trying to, what we're going to assess. It also lays out the performance levels or achievement levels and those descriptors as well. And so it should be fairly similar to other documents that you've seen in the past. Some of the other things that I think the committee wanted us to kind of address is the timeframe for assessment results. So we know that this last year, the first year of working with NWA, that the assessment results for NSCAS have come out much later than a lot of people anticipated. We knew they were going to be later. We told everybody that they were going to be later. But not everybody remembers that when they get them in their hands that we actually told them that, and there's some really good reasons for that. One, we did, since this was the first year of math, NSCAS, we had to set standards and cut scores. We did that in July, brought a recommendation to the board, and you approved those in August. Also, it's the first year of the contract with NWA, and so I think it's reasonable that there are some processes that have to be developed in that first year. With that being said, we also understand that for these results to be used by districts in ways that we want them to be, to inform instruction that they need those earlier, and we've been working on plans to make that happen. And so we're really talking about a double-pronged approach of preliminary results that would allow districts to use those to inform instruction in curriculum, and then the final results that could inform accountability and reporting in those pieces, and trying to come up with how we can satisfy both needs that we have, and to make sure that we're getting those results in a way that makes sense for all of those purposes. So that's the first thing I'd say. The second thing is the resources. NWA's been a great partner, all of NWA partners are, but they've been a great partner with helping us develop resources. And so we're going to put together a fact sheet with new resources that we've developed. For instance, we developed what is a computer adaptive test, and that's meant for students primarily, that's the primary audience, but parents, teachers, others could watch that video, too. It's a couple-minute video. So we'll send you that. Another example is a reporting video that we did for parents to help them understand their students' individual score reports. And so we put out a lot of resources, and we want to make sure that you have access to those as well. So I'll be putting that together and sending that out. And the last thing I'd say is that, so results are coming soon, right? So on December 21st, we're going to have the public reporting of assessment results. And without giving that information away, which is embargoed at this point in time, I think it's safe to say that we knew what we were going to see kind of in the math realm because of the increased rigor that we expect. This change to college and career-ready standards is the same change we made in ELA last year, the same change we made last year with ACT, and so the results are very similar to that. And I think that the message for parents, for teachers, for districts is that we increase the rigor, and we're expecting a lot more from students, and when we raise that bar, less students make it over the bar initially. But as we adapt curriculum instruction, all of those pieces, right, that it's more likely that they'll improve over time. With that being said, we, this will be the second year of ELA, and even though we can compare results from year one and year two, there was a lot of change this year, and I can't emphasize that enough. We had a change in company. We went to adaptive testing. The content really stayed the same, but for students, for teachers, there was a lot of change going on. And so I think we're probably not going to see as much difference growth from year one and year two because of all of that change. I think now that there's some stability in the system as we move forward, we're likely to see more growth as we move forward.
Yeah, I want to add just a little bit, because I think some of you hear things, and I certainly hear things. I met with my superintendent's advisory group in the middle of November, just as we're getting these data results out, and folks are going, why so late? You know, why the, you know, and so you go through that history of why that's the case. But I think it's really important for us to kind of, I'll say, kind of put a flag in the ground on what we want to accomplish on that particular front, and I think we're going to do this fairly aggressively, but I think there's a good chance to actually start thinking about, we want results. Part of our move to NWA, from that three-through-eight perspective, was also about using adaptive assessment to get results as quickly as possible for student learning, right? And so even our purpose was around Nebraska's student-centered assessment system, was that really we wanted that to be student-centered. And so there's the variables that Jeremy already talked about that delay those results. But in the future, and I believe even in 2019, the intention is to get results as soon as possible after the window closes to schools for the purposes, again, that Jeremy talked about, so schools can be using that information. But I think we're going to have to do a bit of a better job of trying to communicate that with our schools and get them to understand the important investment that we've made in that type of assessment, the long-term effects of that, of having that be as immediate as possible, the opportunity to tie that together with other information so they can make, so schools can make decisions as quickly as possible about that. And I probably steal a word that was used, I think, what, decoupling or unlink, delinking? Oh, see, that was, that's like a router, I think. But delinking, the notion of, we, these assessments are done for the benefit of our students, right? I mean, and I think, I think that's always been our major push, and as school districts and leaders across the state, you know, approach me, and I'm sure approach you, our message needs to be, hey, look, we're working to get that accomplished and laying out timeframes, back to calendar, Patrick, the dynamic of getting those things set and putting that, you know, that stake in the ground about what we want to get accomplished on that. And we've really done that. It was really, I will share, just to credit the guru over here, to credit him. I came out of that superintendent's meeting with quite an earful of different things and issues and those things. I came back and talked to Jeremy, goes, well, yes, Commissioner, that is the plan, and that's how that's going to be able to roll out, and here's the intention of that. And so I didn't have to wait more than, you know, two minutes once I walked in this door to get that, that type of answer. So our staff is working very, very hard, and thanks to Jeremy and a lot of folks that have worked on the rollout of this new assessment system. But again, I think you should take some great pride in that rollout, the fact that we've implemented ACT over a two-year window of time. We've now implemented NWA. We have this kind of projection of a path that's going to make a real difference on that. And so we'll keep working on that, but I think it's important that you understand that that process and transition is well on its way, and even though we're in this first year and probably having to deal with some of those hiccups and bumps in the road on that side, I feel really good about where we're at. And it's not perfect, right, just like we discussed before, but I think we're on the right path with many of those efforts, so.
Board members, any questions? Molly? Thank you so much, Mr. Guru. First of all, you know, for so many years, our school districts were choosing to use measure of academic progress, the MAPS assessments for adaptive learning. And I know that the formative assessment is different than the summative assessment they're taking for NSCAS now, but they're related and they're done the same way. So my first question is, are you finding more districts are choosing to use the formative MAPS assessments now?
Yeah, and that, you know, part of it is the fact that we're picking up the cost in, for MAP growth in grades three through eight, so there's definitely an increase in that. And actually, if you turn to the last two pages of the report, we do a correlation study every year of the national norm reference tests that schools are using. Before we moved to the contract with NWA, the majority of our districts were already using that MAP growth to report on that. And now, in this, as we move to this, we only have one school using something other than NWA's MAP growth to report on, and I'm pretty, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure that school has also made the switch to NWA's MAP growth as well. So 100% of our schools are using it in some capacity. One thing that I'd mention about that is, we're providing that, but districts are still making choices about that. So they can choose how many times a year they give it, and how, what grades they give it, and if they want to use additional grades, so the K-2 primary, nine and 10, they can contract, although I think there's been some discussion about whether we should be thinking about, can we support the districts in that way, too? But all of our districts are using that to, and hopefully they're using it well in the way that they're informing instruction.
And the corollary question that is, are you doing advisor integration?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we already had an agreement with NWA to be able to move that data into the advisor as well, and so, yeah, those systems are all being linked up and working together.
Because that is really the basic point for improving instruction of those students at that time, if the teacher can access through advisor the results of adaptive testing. And then finally, how are you doing on the digital repository that supports- And then finally, how are you doing on the digital repository that supports the NSCAST, that creates equity and access for school districts that can't afford to update their textbooks as the standards have changed?
So I'd probably defer to somebody else on questions about the digital repository and those pieces.
It should be related, right?
Absolutely, they're related. And they're related because of the standards, right? Because all of that information, our standards, our assessments are aligned to those standards, and then all of those materials are aligned to those standards. So they have that common linking point together.
Is that available for free, the digital repository, and is it through NDE, or is it through Eissue?
So actually, there's a lot of work going on on that front. I might, I mean, I know there's one more point, maybe I ought to finish this, and I know Maureen's going to ask me to talk a little bit more that might tie to that topic, if you don't mind me deferring for that purpose.
No, that's fine.
Is that appropriate, Maureen, or?
Go ahead.
So part of, part of the ongoing conversation really around, and I'll have Cory come up, because it ties to another kind of concept that we talked about in the, in the committee meeting around assessment results and how you get that, and all the different linking things that make a real difference. So we've done a lot of work on thinking about how standards and the use of instructional materials, and how that ties with digital resources, and the research around which things make a real difference in standards. And we've had a, you know, we've had a unique moment in time, in the sense that we've changed our state, we've changed our state assessment, we have all this robust assessment system aligned with very high expectations, right? The data that you're going to see around proficiency has set a new bar, but it's a very high bar for the state. It's a bar that's actually very much in tune with where ACT has been, and our expectations are very, very high in Nebraska. But part of that required, just as Molly is talking about, the alignment of the other resources that are necessary to make a difference. And so I think where it not just hits on resources available, but the instruction side of that. So I don't know if Cory wants to hit a little bit of what we talked about.
Yeah, sure. Well, one of the things that I was, felt compelled to share with the committee as we start to talk about assessment scores is remembering that assessment scores are connected to our standards and to what happens instructionally in a classroom. So as we want, as we think about summative assessment scores improving, we know that instruction will improve, and that instruction has to change as a result of revised standards. What we're hoping also happens is that districts really are taking a strong look at the materials that they're using to provide instruction that is standards-based. And nationally, and I would say Nebraska as well, there's data that suggests that some of our materials may not be strongly aligned. So we've been involved in some work over the last year that really is helping to signal what's quality and what's aligned to standards, and then providing professional learning to support that. What's interesting is that some of the most, the strongest-aligned instructional resources right now are free and open, and that's nothing that we've done, that's where a lot of the vendors are moving. So as districts are recognizing that they may have a set of materials that are not strongly aligned to standards, there are things that are out there right now that anyone can use for free. Now, it's not, "Free like a puppy," is what Dorian Avey would say. You think about that, because nothing is truly free in that sense. But what we know is there's a lot of supports out there. So as we build our open educational resource hub, that is Nebraska-based, we're actually able to pull over those fully scoped and sequenced curriculums, as well as learning objects, so thinking more about lesson plans, unit plans, et cetera. So really trying to think about the spectrum of materials that are used, again, from that fully scoped, year-long curriculum, to something that is more classroom, here's an activity to help support the standard. We're really working to provide that equity of access, as well as ensuring quality and alignment to standards. That's really, as we think about, how do we improve assessment scores? It goes back to how do we improve instruction in the classroom, and helping students learn the content that you've identified as important through the standards.
Rachel?
A couple of questions and kind of comments in this discussion, and thank you, all three of you, for what you've shared today and the direction. I think one of the pieces, the takeaway, is from our discussion about assessment, in the timeline of assessment, that's important for us as board members to really kind of set an expectation. And that's something, I think, coming back next year, we need to set an expectation for lots of reasons on why we should set the expectation that the assessment access to schools for instructional purposes is sooner rather than later. And that's not, as we discussed earlier in our current contract with our vendors, but if we don't set a bar and expectation, even at a policy level, from a board perspective, it may limit the ability to really get there over time. So that's an important takeaway. If we want to be there, it's something that we, as a board, need to identify as a priority and think about it as a priority from that perspective. I think the other piece, that between the assessment and the discussion on the content repository, that's important for us to keep in our minds, is how will we continue to support value-added processes? So value-added processes are things such as the ACT. The ACT is a value-added process, because we have now provided that to schools, in some cases, districts were paying for that, parents were paying for that. It's actually a value-added process. MAP, the Measures Academic Progress, grades three through eight, is another value-added process. So some of the things maybe we need to think about is, should that be expanded? When we think about early literacy, when we think about K through two, there is the MAP for K through two. Is that something we should determine a strategy for expanding that opportunity? And grades nine and 10, we talked about, the continuum of MAP is there from K through 10 that districts may utilize, should we try to do this in some capacity that has a value-added perspective? With the digital repository, being able to move forward, the open educational resources have a value from a puppy perspective, Cory, as you described, but then sometimes you need to be able to feed that puppy a little bit, or provide a little more to that puppy, some new toys that they won't chew up, or you have to replace, that costs money. And we need to be strategic in thinking about how we build a digital repository that provides that access to high-quality digital content and resources that aren't always in the OER, you know, spectrum. And so I think that's another important for 2019 consideration that we need to really put in our forefront, how do we bring those pieces together and provide those opportunities, not just for schools, but really access for students across Nebraska.
And if I can add to that, Rachel, I think the support for implementation of high-quality materials, and that may be through professional learning. So it's one thing for a district to adopt a set of materials that are strongly aligned to standards and meet expectations for quality, but the implementation in a district takes a lot of effort. And so sometimes that extra that we might provide is around support for implementation through professional learning.
Lisa?
Cory, I just have a question. We've talked about the repository for a long time, and there are so many parts to that. In the near future, is there a way to know when this might actually launch?
Yes, I have to confirm with Dean, but I think we're talking after the first of this year.
Really? Woo! Thank you.
I hope that's right.
It's all on Dean now.
Patrick?
Just a couple of thoughts. We had a discussion earlier in one of our committee meetings about ACT and the results, and what happens when we're sending our kids on to community college, and they're all taking remedial courses, and the fact that, you know, maybe by the time we get those ACT scores back, that there's not much we can do for them in the next year to recover that. But it seems to me, if we have an opportunity to expand or even dictate the use of MAPs at those lower levels particularly, that money is so much better invested in kindergarten through those first, you know, through those elementary grades. And it would also really help us, I think, as far as our strategic plan in dealing with equity and with the groups that we so much need to reach out to. So although I won't be here, I would certainly promote the fact that maybe we ought to look at expanded efforts by this board to, even if necessarily, necessary finance additional MAPs in those early grade levels.
You mean, what, nine and 10?
No, I'm talking about K through eight.
Yeah, nine and 10. Rachel?
If we, if we get them, K, you know, we get them K through eight, if we get them early, and we recognize those issues, it's going to be a lot less expensive and a lot less need for remedial action, nine and 10, or after they graduate.
If I can add, at the committee-level discussion, Pat, that really, I think, reinforces that concept, is three through eight is already available. So by adding K through two and nine and 10, by creating grades K through 10, we do create that continuum that will help, and we had that discussion, and I think Jeremy did a great job in talking about how that will help as it dovetails into the ACT. So you start to create a continuum of information from K through 10 that helps to support that academic development for young people.
Molly?
Just one final question. In 11th grade, sometimes students don't do well on the ACT because they haven't had the coursework that would inform their instruction so they can pass that section of the test. Do we need, as a state board of education, to look at graduation requirements? Do they need to be more rigorous to encourage students to take classes that will help them be higher-performing and less apt to take developmental classes at college?
So the thing that I would say about that is, so, as you know, we recently hired new psychemetrician in-house, Dr. Hamal Su, and he actually worked for ACT. We just had a meeting with Matt Hastings and myself to do research around all of the information. So we have all of this ACT data now, it's just, I mean, there's just so much of it, right? And, but we also have all of the information in our curriculum, coming in through the curriculum reports and all of those types of things. I think, from my perspective, that's maybe too early to say, but there's no reason why we shouldn't be researching those things and informing the policy decisions that we're making, because we just have a treasure trove of data that we really need to mine and get more information about. ACT's done a great job of saying, these are core classes that you need, and they have a big impact. But we actually have our own data that's not self-reported by students that we can actually tap into and do that. And one of the reasons I know that is because that's one of the topics for my dissertation, is around those types of things. And Dr. Su will do much more than I could ever do with that data and digging into that. So I think it's maybe too early to say from my perspective, but I would defer to others.
I would say it's a good question, and thinking too about how those requirements align with post-secondary admission expectations. If the University of Nebraska-Lincoln requires four years of mathematics, but we require three, I think that there's a topic of conversation there, thinking about the type of mathematics that a fourth year of mathematics might be, or even the importance of science. So I think it's a really good question, I do think it's pretty early, but I think that through a revision of Rule 10, that will be an interesting conversation.
Especially if we have virtual, virtual learning opportunities for the more sparsely populated school districts. Thank you.
John, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am. Do you have anything else, ma'am?
I just want to, just want to add that I felt like our committee today had a really very thorough conversation, and had lots of good questions, and got lots of feedback back from Jeremy and Cory. But, and then I asked myself afterwards, was it because it's December, and this whole year is finally caving in on us, and we're finally, but it was just a great discussion today, and I appreciate everyone's input. So with that, Matt, unless you have anything else to add, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you very much. With that, we will take and try to take a five-minute break. Thank you. else to add, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you very much. With that, we will take and try to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Molly, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting, please.
All right. Item 3.4A, revisions to Rule 91. Our committee received information from staff regarding this rule revision relating to driver qualifications and procedures for pupil transportation vehicles. The committee has asked staff Brian, Bryce Wilson, and to share information with the board on the major revisions. Bryce?
Yeah. I'm Bryce Wilson, Administrator of Finance and Organizational Services for the department. Rule 91 was, this is actually the second hearing that we're bringing to you. The first hearing, we got some feedback that we used to make some more modifications to the proposed rule, address some issues and concerns that we heard from that hearing. So the process basically involved a lot of different input from different people across the state that are involved with pupil transportation. And really, the key pieces to it were LB42, which was passed during the last legislative session, increased the age from six to eight for the requirements for kids to be seated in federally-approved child passenger restraint systems. So we needed to address that in a rule. Also, LB347 eliminated school bus permits, which has been a process that Nebraska's used to monitor and authorize pupil transportation drivers across our state. So we had to get rid of that and basically modify our rule to align with those statutes and those changes there. We did add a two-hour in-service training requirement, which a lot of school districts are already doing, and some pre-trip inspection requirements to address safety concerns. Also clarified that emergency evacuation drills must be done by school bus drivers, and then that drivers must pull over any time they're making a phone call on a cell phone. Currently, our rule only addresses texting. And the other key pieces to it, we required schools to develop a policy to confirm a driver's ability to conduct daily tasks and emergency evacuations, basically to have the physical capacity to get the kids off the school bus if there is an emergency. And then we also clarified the definition for motor coach buses, which can be used in activity travel to address some concerns there.
Right. The committee recommends adopting the proposed revisions. Are there any questions? Yes.
I wanted to make sure I read the changes correctly. One was level-one training would go from 11 hours to three hours. Is that correct?
That is correct. So that is another big change, but that is only for small-vehicle drivers. So the small-vehicle drivers are those that drive basically vans and cars or Suburbans, those types of things, not vehicles that stop traffic like a school bus. So those, a lot of the 11-hour training, it revolves around stopping traffic and loading kids on and off while they're in traffic, which is obviously a very dangerous, I shouldn't say very dangerous, it's one of the more dangerous areas when dealing with pupil transportation. Since small vehicles can't do that, can't control traffic, and that's the majority of the time, they can, we can fit all of their training around what needs to be done for safe transportation on routes because they have to get off of the road and load and unload those kids in a place that doesn't control traffic. So that training, that's all was tri- so the majority of the bus, school bus drivers that transport kids, they all have the same 11-hour training. Their training requirement hasn't changed, just for the small vehicles.
So is it required that they unload the kids? I mean, is that written in there that they will be in a non-traffic area when they let those kids out? If not, I have a-
For the small vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Without a stop sign and a big yellow sign that says "school bus" and everything else.
But that's in the rule.
That is, that is, yes.
Okay. And then my other concern is moving the medical-
Exams?
The exam from every year to every two years.
Yeah. That's a, that's a very good point. That was at the suggestion of the Department of Motor Vehicles and the governor's office to follow the requirements for CDLs. That's already the requirement for CDLs. The bus permit process essentially required a bus driver, pupil transportation driver to, for every year, to have that physical done to keep their bus permit up annually. When the bus permits go away and they, I guess, fall to the CDL requirements, CDLs only require a physical every other year. So in keeping consistent with the CDL requirements, that's where that changes to occurring.
You know, I, I, safety is at all of our, the center of our thought, and in rural areas, at least, this isn't meant to be discriminatory or anything, because I'm old. But a lot of places in the rural areas where I taught, there were older bus drivers, and I have a real concern about just having a medical exam once a year. I mean, once every two years instead of once a year.
Rachel?
But that doesn't preclude districts from having their own policy that goes beyond what our rules are. So I think, again, that's important discussions at a local level, as well as what we put in at a regulatory perspective, is, is to understand what's best practices from a perspective of a local district as well.
And I would like to say, we addressed, in gratitude, actually, the deregulation. I think the governor's office has really been talking a lot about deregulation and creating more options for employability in our rural districts. And I concur with Rachel. If a district would, would want to do it more often, that would be up to them.
At their expense, right?
Yeah.
It would be.
Anyway. Anyway. All right. Any more questions? All right, let's move on now to 3.4B, revisions to Rule 92. And Bryce is still here. Committee heard information on revisions related to pupil transportation vehicles. And any extra highlights you want to bring up about 92? We concurred unanimously to support this.
Just every five years, the National Congress on School Transportation meets and updates the national guidelines or requirements, suggestions for how school buses are built. We'll have to align our rule with their requirements. Otherwise, we'd have real difficulty in purchasing buses in our state if they didn't meet the national requirements. So the majority of the changes are related to just matching up with the national requirements. The only other change in their significance, well, two other ones. The other one was we matched up our inspection process. Nebraska has had its own inspection process, which was very similar to the national one. We just, we're proposing to eliminate ours and use the national requirements for checklists on checking the buses. And then, then we also addressed that motor coach, same definition is also in Rule 92. So those are the significant changes.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on now to the next item, 3.4C. Thank you so much. It's a contract for PBIS, Positive Behavioral Instructional Supports and Coaching with Sunny Edwards, and also Item 3.4D for a contract with PBIS and coaching with Heather Gill. They're the same concept, same concept as contracts with two different people. Yes, please introduce yourself and share the highlights.
Sure. I'm Anne Oath. I'm the State Personnel Development Grant Coordinator.
And I'm Teresa Brubey. I'm the Early Childhood Special Education Coordinator for preschool.
So we propose this contract simply so that we have a nice, smooth transition on behavioral frameworks for students in early childhood into school age and building some capacity across our state, especially in the Western handhandle, because sometimes it's hard to get some coaching expertise out there and wanting to just expand our purview.
And since the pyramid model, which is social, emotional, and positive behavior supports for young children correlates and continues on up into positive behavior supports for school-age children, we're trying to develop coaches that will be able to work with districts from birth through 21 and that behavioral continuum.
Any questions? Teresa and Anne, I really wanted to thank you again. I just think all our districts are crying about behavioral mental health. And to integrate this early childhood and the pyramid model with the PBIS is just awesome. So we, our, our committee recommends granting the commissioner authority to contract for both these items. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And finally, 3.4E, grant commissioner authority to approve cooperative agreement with parent and training information. The staff shared information with the committee on this topic. The agreement's been in place for a number of years, and it has come to the committee for review as a cooperative agreement. And we have Amy Rohn here to share information about the scope of work with the board.
All right. I'm Amy Rohn. I'm the Assistant Director of the Office of Special Education. And as I explained to the committee, this is a used-to-be grant, now is a cooperative agreement that we feel like has been in existence for about 20 years, but we're not sure of the exact timeline. But ultimately, it's to provide supports to the Parent Training Information Center, which is a parent advocacy center, providing trainings, webinars, advocacy, and support to parents in need around complaints and due processes. This grant, or this cooperative agreement, is specific in the area of transition. So they would utilize these funds to pay for an individual who would do all of those supports with school-age children, starting at the age of 16 per the federal law, but many of our districts start at age 14 through 21, to partner in school-age supports and then also working with VR and other supports in the work-based area so that those students with special education needs can get the support they need through transitions.
Board, are there any questions? All right. One thing that I did want to thank you so much, Amy, is that transition from our students with special needs from 16 to 21 really creates opportunities for their own, their employability. And it involves the parents, too. So the parents aren't just left adrift when the child graduates from high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the committee recommends approving this cooperative agreement. That concludes Student Success and Access and Support Committee report.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you very much, ma'am. I'll report on Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We have an action item, which is to grant the commissioner the authority to approve the 2019 trust fund budget for the Nebraska Center for the Education of Children Who are Blind or Visually Impaired. And we, please introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Sally Schreiner. I'm the administrator at the Nebraska Center for the Education of Children Who are Blind or Visually Impaired.
Thank you, Sally.
Mouthful. And each year, we come to the Finance Committee with budgets related to what we call our trust funds, which are funds for years and years and years have been left to the school, which are managed by the Department of Education. Each year, we put together a budget and then come share the expenditures from last year along with the budgets for next year.
Did you want to explain a little bit about the budget?
Sure. We have several different trust funds. The first one is an unrestricted one that's been in place for a long time. That one pretty much is stable and not used at this time. It was used in the past. The biggest one we have is the Williams Trust. That's been in place. And quite a few years ago, there was some farmland that had been left to the school, actually, in the 1950s. And after the sale of those farms, that funding is in place, and those are specifically for student needs and things that students might need across the state, students we serve. The third trust is the Marcusson Trust Fund. That was from a former teacher of the visually impaired who passed away probably about 10 years now, who left funding to the state to support new teachers who were going into the field for a scholarship for a teacher who's coming out of that training program. So we have a committee of former teachers who are winners and veteran teachers who select a teacher each year for that $500 scholarship. And then the fourth one is the most recent trust, which was five or six years ago, maybe, and that is the J Trust. And that was another unrestricted trust that is left for the needs for the campus and/or students. And so there's a variety of things that we include in that budget.
Thank you, Sally. Any questions from the board members, comments, concerns? Also, the committee recommended approval for this action item. Matt?
Yeah, I would just thank Sally for being here. And I think it's, and I know many of you have been there to visit in the past and see the outstanding work there. And I, you know, I was thinking about all the history, and I know you have a celebration coming up next week to kind of recognize that, that particular history. But I just really appreciate all of your work and everything that you-
This is my 20th year at this meeting. But the building's been there since 1870. We're celebrating that Wednesday, but I have not been there that long. It feels like it.
Thanks, Sally.
I'd just like to say I was impressed when Sally was sharing in our committee this morning that with the budget that you had set, you had come in under budget each time for various reasons. So that's always nice to see. Good job.
Thank you.
Rachel?
The Braille Challenge. If you could email out the dates for us.
I would love to do that.
And hopefully, if you could make sure the weather cooperates.
I will, I think this is our 10th or 11th year, and last year was the first year we had questionable weather. But it's always in February, right before Valentine's Day or right after. But yes, I will be sure to send that, and you're all welcome to attend that. That's an exciting day where we have students who compete in their braille skills, and it's part of a national program. And we've had many contenders who have went on to Los Angeles. So that's a big day, and it, parents and teachers come in from all over the state and spend the day. So we'll be sure to-
John, I'd like to have Sally share the, some of the events that some of your students are going to nationwide.
Sure. One of the items in the trust fund are national events for students. And this year, we had, we spent more on that line item. We didn't go over, but we spent more because of the students who have placed nationally. American Printing House for the Blind is our partner in providing classroom materials, large print textbooks, Braille, textbooks in Braille. And they also put on a national art competition. And we were very excited. We even had more than four kids just from our center-based program who placed nationally. And we used some of those trust funds to take those families with us to Louisville for the national award, the honor for the banquet. And, and we even had more than that and who, but only four families could go. And we had one student who I don't think's probably ever been in a taxi, definitely never been on a plane, on a train, any, any kind of transportation. And he and his family got to fly for the first time. And so all the other lessons that go with that, we were very excited. And then they contacted us, American Printing House, because Nebraska's been on the national stage so many times. stage so many times. It seems like every year, we have winners. They did a documentary on their art contest, and our students were recognized, and one of our students sings "In the End." So, it's on our website, so it's a great, great recognition. So we're very proud that, we're very well-known to American Printing House for the Blind on the national level, so.
Thank you very much.
Send us a link to their website so we can watch it.
Sure.
Everybody's looking around. Whoever, Ryan. Ryan. Yes, that's on our website, so.
Thank you, Sally.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Can I, can I just say I had the opportunity to come down for the Braille Challenge? I think it was last year, maybe?
That was last year.
And, you know, that was, the work you do down there is tremendous. Most of these kids, as you told me, and I didn't realize, have multiple issues. It's not just blindness or vision impairment, and you do a magnificent job. Also, on these trust funds, I think it's important to note that these really augment your other monies that you receive from the state. Do they not? So, you know, I think that's important to note, so folks understand that. So, thank you, but thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Pat. Glad you could join us.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Fricki, please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee meeting.
Yes, sir. The Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee met with two discussion items on the agenda, and our dear Chair, Pat, was absent, and so I was encouraged to be Chair for a day. So, we had the presentation from Anne and Sarah earlier, so that's taken care of. And so I will now report on 3.6A, AQUEST Accountability and Information. The board received information from staff members on this topic, and we have asked Brad Dirksen and Shirley Vargas to share this information with the board in preparation for the release of the accountability classification later this month. So, have at it. Thank you for being here.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm Brad Dirksen, the Administrator for the Office of Accountability, Accreditation, and Program Approval.
Good afternoon. I'm Shirley Vargas, the Student Achievement Coordinator with the Office of Student and School Support and Services.
And we're providing an update in regards to AQUEST Accountability Classification System. Classifications are to be made public on the 21st of December. It's going to be the first set of classifications since the 2015 release, so it is a little bit, it's not new, but it's a little bit new for, for school districts and their, their schools. I think really the big thing in regards to AQUEST classification is how we're messaging and what we want to convey, and make sure that that messaging is really clear to the schools and the districts. And really, we're not, and we want to make sure we, we don't view this in schools and our stakeholders, the parents, the students, don't look this, as this, as a blaming and shaming and labeling of students and schools. We really want to look at this through an equity focus and an equity lens, that this really is about how do we focus our efforts and our resources and our supports, and how do we get the resources to the students at the right moment, at the right level, at the right intensity? So really, it is an equity issue of, we're doing classifications to focus resources, and I think the big key message around a lot of our AQUEST classification system is really founded and rooted in equity. I think that's a great, great piece, and I think that's a message we're trying to carry forward and communicate to all of our stakeholders. Another key message is partnerships, that we as a department realize that we are not the sole person that can move schools from being a needs improvement to an excellent, good, or great school. We have to work in collaboration with other partners. We have to work with the local school districts, the local schools, but also ESUs and a variety of stakeholders. It's really a partnership to create plans of improvement in order to move schools forward. So, we really are stressing the equity message, and we're really stressing the focus of partnerships. In order to, to focus those, those messages, we're also trying to support schools in, in shifting their messages, as we're doing right here, talking to you about it, what our messaging is. We're trying to help, in the name of equity, what can we do to help school districts pass along that message? So what we've done is we've created a lot of one-page documents that are focused to parents, to superintendents and school staff, community members, and also to ESUs, to say, you know, what are our key messages? What does this new AQUEST classification mean? So we can help spread and disseminate that message, and then they can use those one-pagers also in their communication plan. What we've also been working on is a toolkit for school districts, so they can also start to share this message. So we've wrote draft templates and letters that they can send home to their parents, or they can tweak those letters. We have messages in regards to what they can post for social media, so they can communicate the message via social media, if that's the, the way their constituents receive messages. We've also provided them with some guidance in regards to how to deal with social media inquiries, to how to respond to negative feedbacks and, and those types of things, that can appropriately manage those aspects of the social media. I think that's really, again, focuses on equity, because I think some of our larger districts may have the opportunity to be able to, to create those resources. Some of our smaller districts and smaller schools might not have the resources. So we're helping to enable those, those districts to also have the same opportunity to communicate with their, their stakeholders, which is, I think, is a great opportunity. Another thing I think is really great of what we were able to do, and we're just finishing up right now, is with that toolkit and with the one-pager that goes to parents, we're, we had a translation of those messages from the English language into Spanish. So now, our school districts, if they choose to use those messages, those one-pagers, that toolkit, they can then help communicate with our Spanish-speaking families, and again, in the name of equity. So I, really, if there's anything I can stress is, with our AQUEST classification system, key messages, it is really founded in equity, in building partnerships, that we're really trying to move the needle for students and student success. It is not a labeling, blaming, and shaming. It really is an effort to help. Any questions?
Any questions of any of the, anyone? Any members want to add anything to the presentation? All right. One other thing, the Commissioner will give us an update on Rule 10 progress.
And I'll, I just, they can actually walk away as I say this, but thanks to the team across the department on the very heavy lift. Just so everyone knows, the AQUEST classification goes public again on December 21st, right? So we'll be doing some work. In fact, I've got a lot of work next week where I have to also get up to speed around some of the key messages. I'm going to try to share some of that information with you and get you some additional information, so you have access to, to things that'll help you if you get questions, but do not hesitate if you have ongoing efforts to communicate this. I think, you know, thank you for kind of the setting the tone around equity on, on that particular message. But this is really about improving the educational outcomes for students in the state of Nebraska, and so that, that work is ongoing. So thank you for that. So the, the point around Rule 10, also part of our ongoing work and an important part of that policy arena, as we dive into Rule 10, and I, I'm bad, because I did not take, bring my notes with me, so I will go do this off the top of my head here all of a sudden. But as, as you know, the State Board took on kind of laying out some initial framework relative to the timeline in which we would take on Rule 10. And so, starting this, this spring, oh, thank you very much. I knew someone would help you out. Starting this spring, we really thought it was important to continue to look at the review of the, kind of the context of the things that the State Board looked at as well, but start to really engage stakeholders in a, in a lot of different ways. And one of the things I shared with the committee is, I think it actually will be quite important to have official hearings on this particular process. This is among the, the most substantial rules that we have as an agency, one of our biggest levers relative to changing and improving the education system in the state of Nebraska. And we're going to want a really solid record of engagement that we have, certainly by possibly using hearings. And I, I'll use the example with hearings, as part, in part, I want to engage the legislature, I want to engage the Governor's Office. I want them to be able to see that, that progress along the way, as well as, as well as for us to have that record develop over time. I, I believe that it's important that we think about the different context of the types of things that we want to accomplish, those things that are strictly about current statute and the expectations, the, I'll call them the minimums, the check, the box pieces of that equation. Like we've talked as a board before, the notion of trying to pull that stuff out, as well as having a, a sense of what are, what's the type of performance, what's the type of metrics that we want included in, in a Rule 10 environment? And so there's a lot of that work, but I think gathering, really, if you think about this, this coming spring into the summer, gathering up as much of that information, engaging as many people as possible between January and the summer. At the point of this summer, my hope would be, be able to kind of really begin to synthesize that, that additional input, and then really frame out a new Rule 10, and put that in front of, probably in front of you, but also in front of other stakeholders through another hearing process, with that full framework of what Rule 10 would look like. And part of what we discussed in the committee was the opportunity for school districts to, you know, how can they help take steps forward with us? How, you know, who are the folks that want to be early adopters, even as we get the rule process in place, and making sure that we're leaving time to make that quite possible? So, between the fall of 2019 and the, and the hopeful passage by the summer of 2020, I have to look at my calendar again, to, to actually have that really well in place and hopefully adopted, fully adopted by the fall of 2020. So a two-year timeframe, next year being very significant for, for a rule-making process. And, and I think as we keep talking and learning from different elements of things that even today that we discussed, the timing of, you know, what, how assessment, how, how actually accountability, how these things tie together with the AQUEST system, I know are important parts for, for all of you. But the reality is, by, by the end of next year, I would hope to have a really solid framework for what we want Rule 10 to look like, and hopefully well on our way to being able to advance that for the, for the following year, so. I probably didn't do great, but I tried.
Thank you. Are there any questions from anyone? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And thank you, Commissioner, for that, and I appreciate the kind of timeline that you mapped out on the Rule 10, because of the significance of the changes that are there for Rule 10. I think one of the things that was important at a committee discussion that, that we had as we move forward and into next year, as we shore up that timeline, to do so in a way that is advantageous to school planning. And that school planning, in a December and January timeframe, it's critical for schools to know what kinds of changes they're looking at for 2000, for the next year, for 2020, whatever it may be. And we have to recognize those timelines and those processes, and allow for creativity and flexibility for schools if they want to be early adopters, so to speak, in, in the process of change. So, I appreciate you starting to put together that timeline, and for us, having that recognition of the schedule of schools, and the kind of transition and change from a timeline of schools and school planning that's important.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, that completes the report.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it. In regards to board reports, dates, discussion items, Commissioner Bloomstead, do you have any?
I just think we have the, the ones that are in front of you on your screen, so I don't, I think otherwise, I think it's the normal routine there.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you for submitting your monthly report. Board member reports are linked in Spark, and I encourage you to review each member's report. Tomorrow, we will vote on our request to approve attendance at meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. There are three meeting approval requests. Requests for future meeting attendance, travel from board members are linked in the Spark meetings. If you have any additional travel requirements to be approved, please complete the State Board Travel Request Form in your board folder and submit them to Laura and Ryan before tomorrow. Tomorrow, we approve the board request for meeting attendance. The monthly board travel expense report is attached in the Spark meetings for you to review. Regards to adjournment, if there's no other business, see none. The regular scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning in this room. We are adjourned. Thank you.